Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting with the board of trustees of East Central High School District. We inhale on May 18th, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM in East Central High School Cafeteria. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, and here now. Emilio Carrasco.
I'm present.
Ginger Frisimont. Nathan Garson.
Here.
James Mulkey. Everybody's over here. Molly Plaza. And John Massingale.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will move on to item two, I mean three, prayer and clear. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. I'll turn it over to Principal.
Ms. Toscano, President Massingale and trustees, and students and families, welcome to East Central High School and welcome to all our special guests for this beautiful night of celebrations. Celebrations of service, loyalty, and commitment by our ECISD family. I am Melissa Barnett-Cotchen, proud principal of East Central High School, and it is my honor to be with you this evening and to invite Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Kiana Johnson to the podium to lead us in this evening's prayer. Kiana?
Please wire your heads and close your eyes. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as our educators, staff, and school board members begin this school board meeting. Lord, help them engage in meaningful discussion, and in this process, Lord, please help us grow and guide these members here today to make beneficial decisions for the East Central schools and community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Kiana. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the colors by the East Central JR OTC Color Guard and then the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Guarding the American flag is Cadet Private Michaela York. Carrying the American flag and directing the Color Guard is Cadet Staff Sergeant Mark Anthony Lopez, Jr. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Private Absidi Amaro. Guarding the Texas flag is Cadet Corporal Melanie Cordova. And now the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge led by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Kiana Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Again, thank you, Kiana. I'd like to take a quick moment to recognize the many organizations that greeted you today as you came in. We had our cheer and our dance led by Teacher Brittany Calunda. We had our drum line led by Band Director Ron Garza. Our electric guitar team was here led by Teacher Forrest Hawthorne. We also had our mariachis led by Ms. Villarreal. Our law enforcement students were here with Teacher Elaine Flores. And our art fair, if you haven't noticed, is on display in the path for our music and our art showcase. That's from 5:00 to 6:30 if we happen to get out early. We also had our fashion boutique, which is led by our fashion teacher, Ms. Mize. Our co-op organization was here led by Ms. Wiley. And our construction tech students and our teacher, Mr. McDaniel, was outside as well. Of course, we had our student athletes and our JR OTC and our P-Tech students. Board members, Superintendent President Massingale. Before you, on the table are some gifts provided by our students. Your flowers were created by the advanced floral design students that earned their Texas State Forest Association Floral Certification. The chips and salsa. Yes, thank you, thank you. You also have some chips and salsa, and those are compliments of Ms. Courtney Mize's practicum class. Her students Isabella, Cortez, and Jasso made their roasted Tomatito and avocado salsa. They competed at the St. Philip's Salsa Invitational in the fall, and they won second place and scholarships to attend the St. Philip's School of Culinary Arts. You'll also find a gift bag, and inside of it, you'll find a pillow. It is in our school colors with an EC Hornet embroidered on it. The tag says EC Boutique, and it also has the name of the student designer on it. Ms. Jerry Mize, our fashion one-two and practicum teacher, supported the students in that creation. There's more. Teacher, Mr. Hirsch, his ad structures class created your cutting boards. He wanted to make sure I told you, they are food-grade and food-safe, so you can use them. They're not just for display. The students who assisted him were Jayden Adams, Sterling Bell, Brayden Thomas, Jared Hansel, Garrett Fellers, Gabe Salinas, and Josh Greer. And then Mr. Hawthorne's student, Holly Helmy, created the business card holders in his manufacturing technology course as well. Lots of gifts, lots of gifts. We're almost done. One more, y'all. We had to shower them in gifts. And then, of course, Mr. Danny Kimpen's FFA and agricultural science students cooked all up a fresh batch of beef jerky. So, I, yes. So I think y'all are all set. Y'all are gonna have plenty of snacks for our softball game. I want to make sure y'all are all invited. Y'all know this, to the softball regional semifinals, it's round four, game one is tonight in Marion. But if we can't quite make it this evening, game two is tomorrow at 7:00 PM in Somerset. And hopefully we win tonight and tomorrow, we don't have to go to a game three. But if we do, that's Saturday at 7:00 PM in Somerset, okay? So just, you know, putting that out there. Mr. Toscano, before I turn it back over to you, I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you to our board members for all of their hard work and leadership. I am truly grateful to your commitment to our community, and we are very, very lucky to have each of you. I would also like to take a moment to thank our parents, our grandparents, our guardians, our Godparents, and all of those here tonight with a student. If you are here with a student, can you please stand to be recognized? Any of your students are here? Y'all, they're all here with a awardee. Okay, that's all right. It takes all of us coming together to unite as a family, y'all, to achieve such success. And it takes one great leader to lead this family. So with that, I turn it over to our great leader, Mr. Toscano.
All right. We will move on to item four, awards and recognition. Mr. Toscano.
The service to Massingale trustees, help call Mr. Johnson to the podium. We are very excited and welcome all of you here this evening in honor of your service to the East Central High School District, its community of important aged children. So thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here to support the honoring of such wonderful people who have provided such a fantastic service and contributions to the community.
Yes, sir. Mr. Toscano, Mr. Massingale, board members. Tonight, I've got the privilege of recognizing many of our exceptional staff members of the East Central ISD community. We have reached a milestone this evening in your careers of service to our community. We are honored to recognize our employees on behalf of the EC family. Congratulations to each of you on achieving this anniversary within the district. This evening, we will celebrate each of you, and combined, you have 2,050 years of service that you have dedicated to East Central. Like every employee in our district, you were hired with the anticipation of greatness and are being recognized tonight because you embody the values of East Central and, most importantly, the value of loyalty. Some have come to us right out of college and others after 20 years of previous experience, but all with a burning desire to positively impact the lives of children. Without a doubt, whether they have been here for five years or some of you tonight we're recognizing for 50 years, our loyal EC staff are being recognized because they shape the future and are difference makers in our community. Our first group that we would like to recognize is our five-year service award recipients. So if our five-year honorees wouldn't mind making your way to the back area along the black curtain, you'll begin to line up at Mr. Oliver, and on your way back there, we'll kind of let you know how the rest of it tonight will proceed. Mr. Oliver will call your name as you come down. You will then receive your award. You'll stop for a quick photo. Now, here's the bigger kicker is they'll probably, Mr. Toscano will probably help him a little bit, the first couple of them, to let him know we're gonna go to the, my right, your left, and we'll go around the other side of the curtain for a group photo for all the year-five recipients. And then we'll repeat that process from 10, 15, all the way to 50. So this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Oliver in the back to begin recognizing our five-year recipients. Bianca Cabasas. Anthony Sanchez. Lauren Ordevar. Savannah Overra. Carmen Sanchez. Ina Rivera. Misti Hassan. Ivan Vinius. Sergio Lopez. Alma Rosa Martinez. Brandon Cooper. Shannon Leo. Cynthia Babanski. Riley Jones. Lauren Barber. Lauren Doyle Wim. Karen Clark. Alisa Ubali. We always want to recognize the family and friends of our honorees because we know that the kind of commitment and sacrifice that it takes to serve public education, and there's no way to be successful without an understanding and supportive family and friends. At this time, if you are a family member or a friend of one of our five-year honorees, if you would not mind, please stand so we can also recognize you and thank you for your support. Thank you. For our 10 years, we'll start to make your way to the back and begin lining up with Mr. Oliver. We'll get started at the 10 years. Lynn Blanco. Victoria Velez. Linda Gomez. Keith Moore. Heather Burns. Joy Daisy Encino. Matrice Eddie. Ernest Ramos. Alma Corneo. Casey Beckett. Rhonda Villarreal-Eckles. Marie Dublin. Jennifer Anderson. Amy Rodriguez. Denise Amorillo. Jessica Tarr. Maria Viasignor. At this time, would our family and friends of our 10-year recipients please stand so we can also recognize you? Please stand, family. Thank you. Thank you for your support. At this time, if you are a 15-year recipient, if you can begin making your way to the back, that would be great. 15 years. Tonight, we have 32 EC family members that we are recognizing for a total contribution of 480 hours of service to ECISD, oh, years, sorry, hours, totally like, wait, we're accelerating it. Yeah, all right. Ron Garson. Harriet Beltrane. Lisa Portega. Kalie Lane. Elizabeth Geisler. Heidi Lynn Pease. Rebecca Coats. Ali Contreras. Joette Barnes. Artha Perez. Valerie Harper. Stephanie Dagan. Oscar Alvarado. So at this time, if our family and friends of our 15-year honorees, would you please stand so you can also be recognized? Thank you for your continued support. They couldn't do it without you. Up to our 20-years, if our 20-year honorees, would please make your way to the back and line up. We have 20 20-year honorees with a total years of service of 200 years. Raquel Hernandez. Cindy Zerwin. Jennifer Casper. Lotus Diaz. John Hernandez. Would our family and friends of our 20-year recipients please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you for 20 years of support. This time, we'd like to recognize our 25-year honorees. If you've served for 25 years, if you can make your way to the back.
Edna Gonzalez. Roberto Fuentes. Imet Sanders. Kendra Schlatter. Nina Alvarado. Deborah McBeans.
Would our family and friends of our 25-year honorees please stand so you can also be recognized? This time, we would like to ask our 30-year honorees to please head to the back so we can recognize you for your contributions to ECIS.
Stella Oskas. Karen Volchel. Stevie Gonzalez.
Would the family and friends of our 30-year honorees please stand so you can be recognized? So we have one person who has 35 years, and that is Sharon Rakowitz. So Ms. Rakowitz, if you're here, if you may mind making your way to the back. Sharon, will you even make it? You don't see her? Alright, well, we're gonna move on. So we have two very special 50-year honorees. Ms. Dorothy Owens and Judy Burns. If you are a honoree, start making your way to the back and line up to be recognized. But before we call them down, we want to let them know and everyone else here know that we reached out to some of your colleagues just for a few things to say about you. So I'll turn it over to Brandon first to...
Dorothy Owens.
Go ahead, come on down, Dorothy. So her colleagues say, Dorothy, you are a wonderful person to work with. You are the ultimate fact-checker and best that ECIS has ever had. In the business office, Dorothy is instrumental in ensuring that we are accurate with our finances, and she is quick to spot when there are inaccuracies. She is as sharp as a tack, a wealth of information, and when we have questions, she is the one we go to. Ms. Owens is dependable, friendly, and loving. I admire her so much, and ECIS has been blessed by her wonderful commitment for these past 50 years. Dorothy is a ray of sunshine and a true pleasure to work with. We admire Dorothy for her patience, consistency, and dedication that she shows daily. She never complains, never wavers, and always does her best, which is a rare in these times. Dorothy, we look up to you in so many ways, and thank you for being a role model of professionalism. We love you. So I know that you are all family and friends, but if her family and friends are in the audience, we would love to recognize you as well. So I had to ask you to stand up again, but if you could stand so we can recognize you, thank you.
Judy Burns.
So many thoughts and memories flood our mind, like the awesome banana pudding, the numerous office frames, and the brilliant mind around the various funding resources. The wisdom and mentoring will never be forgotten and will always hold dear to our hearts. We appreciate your patience and work ethic every time we come to you for direction and guidance. She has always been a wonderful, caring boss and a great asset to the district. She genuinely loves ECIS and is filled with pride to have served her beloved district. Over 50 years, the world of public education finance has changed tremendously, and Judy has adapted along the way. It is a true blessing to work with her as she calmly and confidently guides our department through all of the changes that we've experienced. Judy is full of so much wisdom, and it is reassuring to know that we can go to her with any challenge or issue, and she continuously provides guidance and support. ECIS is beyond blessed to have Judy. One member says, "I left the banking industry after 20 years when I lost my daughter. I was considering going into teaching, but one day during the summer of 2010, Ms. Burns called me, and I asked, and she asked if I would be interested in working in the business office part-time. I said sure, not realizing what I was getting into. I thought maybe working in the business office would be better than teaching at the time, knowing my background in business. Who would have thought that I'd be working for ECIS 13 years later in the business office? And I thought to myself, I should have done it sooner. She is a true mentor, leader, and is dedicated to our district, and I'm so glad I answered that call on that one summer day. She has changed my life for the better and has made ECentral ISD my home and my family. She is Miss ECentral. Judy loves ECIS, and Judy, we love you." I know we're all family and friends, but I really would like to recognize her family and friends at this time. If you would also just stay standing so we can recognize you, thank you so much. Next, we are pleased to recognize a very special group of people, that is our retirees, of which, tonight, we are celebrating 26. Our retirees have contributed a combined total of 492 years of service to the ECentral community and a total of 602 years of service in public education. On behalf of President Massengill, the Superintendent Mr. Roland Toscano, and trustees in the entire ECentral community, thank you for your commitment and dedication. Thank you for the countless hours spent preparing, supporting, motivating, and guiding our students. You are the catalyst for so many young people achieving their dreams. Your retirement is not a celebration, and not just for all the years that you put into education, but for every child that you have helped along the way and the knowledge that you have imparted. It's the patience and dedication that has made a difference in the lives of others. You have, without question, had an impact on the students you serve and in this entire community. We certainly realize that not all retirees were classroom teachers. So whether a teacher was your official title or not, you were all critical elements in the education of our children. Kids learns first by watching. They learn far more by reading, writing, science, and social studies, and math than they do by other people they encounter in our schools. Students learn through strength and strong work ethic by watching the examples set before them, like people like Hope Orrego, Becky Talamontes, and Ronald Cobb, who have served for a combined total of 59 years as custodians for ECIS. They've learned about kindness, yeah, you may know. They've learned about kindness and dedication by watching our librarians, Candy Householder, Josephine Martinez, and Malia Sanj, as they have served for a combined of 84 years. They have learned compassion from Kendra Schlatter as she has applied thousands of Band-Aids, ice packs, and taken countless temperatures. But most importantly, she has made students feel better because she loved them when they entered the nurse's office for the last 25 years. Retirees, you have touched the lives of so many, always encouraging and challenging us to strive for excellence. You have shaped and molded the future and inspiring our students or tomorrow's leaders. You are leaving a legacy. As we recognize our retirees, and certainly there are many who will be flooded with great memories, like the ones I have, teaching science next to Ms. Leanna Pond. As a young teacher and coach, I always was amazed by her teaching skills and hoped one day to be half the teacher that she is. Her kindness and willingness to help others has always been an inspiration. She made me and many other teachers better. Her impact will be forever remembered. And there will be people recognized tonight that have made an impact on you as they have served this community for so long in so many different ways. And I encourage you to reach out and share with our retirees your memories and the things that you appreciate about them as they close this chapter in their lives and begin a new one. To our retirees, it is time to celebrate you and all the time that you have dedicated and the hard work that you have led at this joyous occasion. Whether ECentral was your last stop in a long career or a home for many, our ECentral community is better for having you and your leadership, your service, and your friendship. So retirees, I'll turn it over to Mr. Oliver to begin.
Presti Shabro. Kendra Schlatter. Leanna Pond. Mary Sanchez, posthumously, receiving her orders, her daughter, Dominique Sanchez. Cynthia Lemansky. Roger Lawson. Kara Mahalstey. Andy Householder. Marion Westmoreland. Sharon Parsons. Lotus Diaz. Leslie Clay Jr. Darlene Katara. Stacy Kelly. Carolyn Dove. Janine Swanson.
Will all of our retirees, family, and friends please stand so you can also be recognized? Thank you, thank you, thank you for showing your love and interest for all of these years. A few final good wishes for our retirees. May you always have work for your hands to do. May your pockets always hold a coin or two. May the sun shine bright on the window pane. May rainbow be certain to follow each rain. May the hand of a friend always be near you, and may your heart be filled with gladness to cheer you. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. To our retirees, congratulations one more time. Round of applause for everybody that we got here tonight. And congratulations. And congratulations.
Hi, hey, hey, my turn. Um, I, so I post all my stuff on social media, on the old Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, so we don't see all you, um, throughout the month, but, um, uh, they can stop on rumors and messages or documents. So, um, I do share with myself, so I could share Mr. Massengill, his company, Massengill Merchors. He had a group of students in, um, to learn about, uh, motors and pumps and, uh, whatnot. They do this every year for these students, and, um, hopefully they'll take an interest in, um, this kind of career, and, um, they really enjoy it, they learn a little bit, and then they come back and take their job. But he does this for them every year, and they really enjoy it.
There's about 850 students in the class, and so how many students are in the AHS? He says roughly 150. I said, very much about 80%. Now, the, in the interest of the scholarship celebration, is an accomplishment that you start, it's not, but when you, when you take it down to 80%, that makes it even more an accomplishment. Because the student has one thing that he controls, here she controls, and that's the scholarship. They, they control the grades, they make the, they make the assignments, they take the test, so they know if they make an A, or B, or C. The other pillars are that. The partners, the community, the students, the teachers, the administrators, they're the ones that are determining this. So, yes, the student contributes to it, but in, in a way that how they experience it, how they go about their school every day, their school year. So, if they, if they're told, think about this, 80% of students have accomplished this. I think it is more significant. When I was selected back how many years ago, I thought it was weird, they can't handle our way of life, which I still have, by the way. It's kind of hard to, it's so, but I wanted to take, we do, but, but two years, it has gained significantly, because very few make it. So I think it is something like, if we tell our students, it's what, only a small percentage of you have A grades. I think it puts a greater, uh, ordinance to it. I think they, they feel a spirit higher than something that's different, and I think they will appreciate it more. I know that Sagittarius, Uranus, Uranium, we have the shows, and so forth, but I think they, it was very obvious, knowing that it's only a small percentage of them at late age. So I, I really enjoyed those three events that I attended, and I wish I could have attended four of them, but that was my ten best.
Move on to Jane Longley, your tribe.
Uh, it's Massengill, and, uh, for the last, very exciting, the last three weeks. I started off with the girls', uh, softball volleyball game. When I went to volleyball game, it was about six seconds, and we had a three-one on one, and boy, you talk about something exciting. It was really, uh, exciting, uh, ending to that game. Following the week, I went to the senior sign over at the gym, and I thought, leave it at the gym, somehow it stopped being a part of the schedule. And I said, hey, Coach, would you come speak to the girls? Well, she called me up, and I, and I said, and she said, where do you know? Oh, you know, won't you, but you know, she played on the spot, so I said, I'll come speak to the girls. I wouldn't talk to the girls, they were going to play, um, with the three. And they wanted to, oh, I didn't know this time, it's not the game, I went to the third game, I'm sitting in the stands, she come to the stands, she made, oh, she come, says, uh, to the girls. I said, I can't get down there. Well, come to parents, and they can have a whistle, talking about, you'll take one six times. And, and these girls are so amazing, uh, and, and the games are so exciting. So, uh, next week, they're playing Rhyme. And so, uh, Coach called me again, she said, hey, Coach, can you come and speak to the girls? Go get my whistle if you want. So, I went and spoke to the girls again, and they wanted to see her. So, hey, uh, I was at my favorite recognition, and he did not know the name, Coach, uh, uh, Barry, I was, she called me, she said, Coach, can you come, uh, speak to the girls? Well, I couldn't, I, well, I got my whistle out of that, so I said, yeah, I'll be, I spoke to the girls, and they all ready to play, uh, uh, O'Connell. O'Connell is, uh, defending state champions. East Central will play them tonight, the seventh high game is on that. Anyway, East Central is number 12 in the state of Texas, the 16th. They are putting E-Central on the map. I mean, they are putting East Central on the map, and those, and this is, and I would love to be out there and support them, I would be anywhere else out there supporting them. But those girls are so excited to play, and so I went and spoke to them again, and I talked to them about, hey, we need to, uh, uh, put all the pressure on O'Connell, and, and, uh, and, and good luck to you. And viewing all these different sites where I've been going to see these girls play, and, uh, and, and Mr. President, those girls are playing in first-class facilities. My tenure is about to come to an end here, and I would love to see some of those facilities. So our girls, we can host a playoff game, and, and what, and the community deserves the facility that those girls are playing in, and those girls are going to have this job. But I had a really exciting three weeks.
Move on to Amelia, your chicks.
Yeah, so, uh, these are a few of the events that we, this is a little dated, but this was prom, and, and, uh, my wife says, you better get that picture up there, because Miss BK was amazing, so, there you go. We, we also had an opportunity to go see the boys play, uh, in their, uh, their playoff game there. They, they came up a little short, but they played their heart out, and we were just thrilled to be there. And, uh, we had an opportunity to go, this, this event here was just, man, I couldn't, you couldn't take a smile off my face. This was Salado's fine art program, and they had these little kids here, and they did the raspa, and, uh, that, that's something we did as kids, I mean, it was, it brought back some memories. We had a great time. That young lady there with me, with my cheesy smile there, she's on my T-ball team, uh, by the way, they won first place. And she was my star pitcher. Uh, this, this event here, this was the, uh, uh, oh, who's that? There it is, superintendent of the month, yeah, I think, how could I miss that? Sorry, dear Mr. Toscano, but we, we, we were just thrilled to see these kids, and, and like, uh, someone alluded to earlier, uh, from the littlest to, to the older ones, man, what a thrill it is to see these great accomplishments. And then here's the game, uh, we had, uh, my wife had better seats than I did at this game, I was over there on the fence line on the ground, and we got moved out, we were in the, in the, uh, warm-up pitching area there, but nonetheless, we had an awesome time, and the girls are doing amazing. I, I concur with Coach there, they went to East Central on the map, I love it, I love it.
Uh, how, do I have to put behind you? Uh, I did, uh, opportunity to, uh, attend the awards, superintendent students of, uh, of the month awards, and it was just too awesome. I never seen somebody with daddies, it's a pity, with daddy, persons that were awarded, which is, as a fact, too cute. Uh, but the, the, uh, other, uh, awards ceremony I attended was National Honors Society, and I was exceptionally pleased to know how that was done. Um, they reminded me, when I was in, in the, to the Honors Society over fifty-something years ago, and I had an opportunity to speak to the, that was, uh, service, that's, that was my, that, that was my character of service, and I was sharing with her how long ago I had, uh, had that datter, and, uh, her, her mouth just kind of dropped, I mean, I said, I, I got that before, you will wonder for you, mother's one property before you, right? But, but I make no point about that, because that's something I will always remember. I mean, I, I've got a lot of awards over there, but I always remember walking down the, getting, getting that award that long ago, uh, and it was service, and that's really a large part of my life, and so those persons that do that will never forget, so I'm so grateful that school continues to be there.
All right, we'll bring, I'll bring up the clues. So, I was able to, a few weeks ago, travel to Kansas City, uh, the road, uh, support boards, and Charles Hopper, uh, with the electronic team, and on Friday night, uh, I got there on Friday, and Friday night, uh, we were able to go with the kids to go to Lakeside Speedway in Kansas City, uh, a late model and modified dirt track race, which was a lot of fun, the kids really enjoyed it. So that was on Friday night, Saturday, uh, the kids, I tell you what, there's a wonderful group of kids, and I, my hat's off to Forrest Hopper and Charles Hopper. It seems like every year I say the same thing, that this is the best group of kids, but this is just an amazing group of kids, Forrest and Charles, I can't sit enough about how well they did with this program. And my hat's off to Dr. Holman, without their support, uh, with, with this program, uh, it's just amazing, these kids are just unbelievable, and they did a great job, they came home in third place, after four, two, four arm, or two, their ever-expanding trophies over there, so it's just my hat's off to this program.
We'd like to conclude the trustee reports. With that, we will go to move on to item seven, superintendent's reports. What I would like to do, I know everybody would love to get to the game, so we can run through this stuff as quick as we possible, so everybody can get to the game, if they want to go to the game, so let's just be mindful, uh, of time, thank you. Mr. Toscano.
Yes, our trustees, this is our, uh, electronic package, uh, this month's personnel report is included, you can see the activity this month, it's going to ramp up. Let me know if you need any additional information, and we should get that to you. This time, I'd like to pass the mic over to Beth Sanders, our director of personnel, provide forward with updates. We work on the patch of this department this year, we have a hard copy, your resume folder, or you can follow on the electronic way, or on the screen, if you have to do that.
I want to talk really loud, that was really bad, I hope you all be hearing. So, Mr. Massengill.
Mr. Massengill, members of the board, I'm here to present to you the personnel department, uh, goals, um, update for the 2022-2023 school year. So, for priority one, uh, teaching and learning environment, our focus is on systems in our department, and improving and sustaining personnel systems to be able to provide our campus in our high level of support and service to ensure a whole, qualified staff throughout the district. Um, in order to do that, uh, what we do, the trouble in our department is we have intentional professional development for, um, our team members to ensure growth of our staff, to continue to, to strengthen those, the front system. The development, professional development that we, um, committed to this year was through, um, TASI, um, HR Services, the frontline system, the frontline, is the system that we use for applications, onboarding, um, and employee files, and then HSH is a recruitment system that we use for that. So for priority two, head performing and engagement workforce, uh, of course, one of the things that we really, um, potentially, of course, always focus on is on recruitment, but considering the state of, um, teacher shortage right now, we really had to think outside of the box with that. And so what we worked on this year in the area of recruitment are teacher residencies. Uh, those residencies, residents are coming to us from the TSA in Texas City, and at San Antonio for the 23th and fourth school year. Uh, we're also looking at, um, creating a lawyer program, so looking at opportunities for our parent professionals that are either degreed or are very interested in the teaching certification, and providing them opportunities within the district, um, to become teachers. Another recruitment piece is visiting international teachers, and that is an opportunity, teacher up in the system that we've learned about recruitment, and that piece allows us to look at, have our hands, every certified teacher in the state, and given our certificate, um, and we can place our positions on that website. Um, and as far as Texas Workforce Commission, we really do need that organization to help us with our auxiliary scouting. And the other piece of priority two is Holzberg and Leadership Vacancy Planning. We did have a need in our district to create a really strong bench of leaders, and we were afforded the opportunity, and a few minutes ago, through the Holzberg Center, which is funded by HPE, um, to be is funded by HPE, um, to be a part of the workforce. So what we've worked on the last two years and will continue to do for the next three is, uh, continue to work with creating a national principal pipeline, creating a bench of ready leaders, principals and assistant principals, as we continue to, uh, do the increase in employees in our district. Uh, last piece, uh, priority two is the Teacher Centennial Longman. Uh, we have completed the application process for that, that was submitted in April. This next year, we're going to work on T-Test calibration, which is our teacher evaluation. So we do have an organization that's going to be assisting us with that this year, and then data capture areas coming up here will be needing it to improve our teacher, um, performance. Priority three, we've some collaborative partnerships, so for community partners, TeachWorthy is one of our two qualifications here, and the area that we work very closely with, that quite a few really good candidates, and I really have pulled and supported those individuals. We're also working with the San Antonio, Kansas City, the residence program that I spoke of just a few minutes ago, and then Texas Workforce Plan for, um, auxiliary staffing needs. System Support, ESS, we're continuing to work with our substitutes, and then Recruitment and HACSHA to reach out. For priority four, um, Resources and Operational Excellence, led over the year, we'll look at our CG plan to look at Laura Eats Art for the year, really looking at our business schedules, all of that really tightly around the year. As far as staffing, as we move forward into the next year, again, we're always looking at our enrollment to help guide our, um, staffing for the year, um, and we are continuing to work with new ways to recruit. So in conclusion, um, as we look ahead to the next year and through the summer, um, again, we'll be doing a lot of work amongst the teaching staffing, looking at residence programs in our, uh, career round, uh, continuing to review our travel systems, uh, to prepare for this, to explore it in Kansas City for the next year or so, and then continuing to work on, uh, leadership vacancy planning, um, for our leadership. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question?
I was just curious, should you speak a little bit about?
Right, so Teaching Centennial Longman is an incentive for teachers, um, that we have to practice. So what we, uh, the plan is that we will look at, um, look at our data, and we have to look at teacher performance next year, and to submit that information to PA and Texas Tech. So what that allows us to do is we will have measures, uh, where your teachers plan, um, as far as, um, they can be recognized, master, and supporting, and then according to where they plan within that, then they will be used for, um, that's kind of okay, over because trust is, it, it, there's a lot of details into it, uh, but it is something that we have worked on, um, so we'll, we can provide the information on that, and if you all want a little bit more detail, it will be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Colcy and Murdaugh, all right, we're going to leave, uh, progress this year, and we have, um, we're actually in the electronic packet, um, ready?
Okay, so, good morning, right. Uh, thank you, Congressman Massingale, Mr. McDonald, Board of Trustees, I'm happy to present to you the Risk Management Department update for priority one. Uh, ECIS is being hosted at TASI Risk. All right, so ECIS is being hosted at TASI Risk Solutions Management Teams Regional B, with neighboring school districts, uh, in order to provide, um, share best safety practices, attendees are able to learn from the TASI experts and peers from other districts, regarding common mistakes and workers' comp injuries, uh, implementing or improving on modified teaching programs, exploring telemedicine for workers' comp injuries, cyber security awareness, and other loss prevention and safety and security, uh, compliance for school districts. For priority two, we focus mainly on the health and wellbeing of our staff. So first, we have Recur, that's our free telemedicine service provider, uh, it is available to all employees free, along with their dependents. This service saves our employees valuable time and money, while preventing exposure to other illnesses should they have sought treatment inside a facility. Our employees continue to highly utilize this initiative, uh, from September to April, had over eleven hundred visits between employees and their dependents, uh, and that saved them about one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that I can find, had they sought treatment, um, outside of telemedicine. Uh, survey results show that they have a ninety-two percent satisfaction rate, and eighty percent of visits, uh, result in a pharmacy prescription. The Essential Health and Wellness Center is a primary care facility for employees and dependents who are covered under the essential's medical plan. The purpose of the clinic is to promote employees to be actively engaged in their primary healthcare. All visits are free, along with routine, uh, lab work, and since implementation, the, the utilization just continues to increase. Uh, there's sixteen months worth of data there, but you can see that January through April of this year, it was higher than January of April last year, and you can see that we have, uh, a peak in the summer month, and that's primarily due to our, um, staff, uh, seeking healthcare visits during the summer when they're away from work, um, but it's also because last May to July, we launched our first Personal Health Campaign, or PHA, and that consists, um, of employees measuring key health, uh, indicators such as height, weight, blood pressure, uh, waist measurement, uh, and blood draw, and following the PHA, uh, members receive their personal results, um, and a recommendation for any follow-up to address, um, concerns. The primary goal was to promote engagement in overall health and wellness by incentivizing premium discounts, which is twenty-five dollars a month, uh, for employee coverage, uh, fifty-dollar a month discount for, uh, employee and spouse coverage. Nearly sixty percent of our eligible employees and forty-two percent of our eligible spouses did participate, uh, in the Care Agency survey results, uh, we have an overall ninety-four net promoters score, and, um, I could literally talk for hours on how much positive feedback that we receive on, uh, Dark Hill, uh, and Ritzland, and we do have some, uh, quotes there, that, um, caring TC, they can sort of take through anonymous, uh, survey results. Uh, Wonder Health is the new weight loss and lifestyle program that we launched this year. Uh, our goal is to provide tools for employees to feel better and improve their health. The program consists of an online platform, um, and includes simple practice skills for staying hydrated, improving sleep, uh, providing eating skills such as avoiding sugar, uh, not eating until you're hungry, stopping when you're full, um, gives recommendations for frequency and different types of exercising, um, and then provide the employees to monitor, uh, their weight loss. About thirty percent of our staff are currently participating. For priority three, we have partnered, uh, with Trust and Capital Group, DCG, that are current party administrator for the board, creating four seven retirement plans. Uh, our goal is to educate our staff on how TRS retirement works for them, uh, and how to save additionally full retirement. Uh, we began this financial wellness, uh, initiative back in twenty nineteen, and we saw a little bit of an, an initial increase, uh, that participation kind of leveled off during COVID, um, but when comparing the year totals of December of this year and this past December twenty twenty-two, we saw a significant increase in participation, and this was primarily due to the fact that we invite, invite our retirement specialists out to, um, campus staff meetings, uh, during our insurance enrollment, and providing access for employees to schedule one-on-one consultations, um, with our DCG retirement specialists. Uh, currently, twenty-one percent of eligible employees are participating in additional retirement plan, uh, but we want to pass the state average, which is at about twenty-six percent. Uh, the, the business department also supports the Central School Foundation. We were proud to continue this at the twenty twenty-three Denim and Diamond Scala, where the foundation raised over one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for teacher mini-grands. Uh, it was an honor and a privilege to work not only with our business department staff, uh, but with the wonderful foundation board and volunteers. Priority four, we focus on our most, uh, valueary stores, which is our staff, uh, to continue to monitor our workers' comp claims, uh, to keep our staff safe at work. Uh, we turned this down, uh, years twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen, uh, we really did down the COVID when we were broke out working. Um, and last year, we had another spike, mainly due to large claims, but this year we are certainly lower, and, uh, I'd like to give a shout-out to all those departments who really work hard to mitigate the claims, uh, for their staff. Uh, we continue to manage our insurance coverages to protect our property assets, uh, and then this year, we have, uh, participated in many, provided many bookkeeper trainings and budget steward trainings, uh, and we were able to send our, our staff to TASI, um, the annual coverage of the president's San Antonio. So in conclusion, we're just going to continue to, uh, enhance and provide benefits to, um, our staff. We're going to be exploring, uh, additional clinic hours, conduct, um, our second year of PHA, which is about to launch next week. Uh, we're going to continue with our telemedicine, and I'm, uh, happy to announce that next year, uh, in addition to the medical visits for free, employees will have access to mental health, uh, the year-old, uh, visits for free, I'm very excited about that. Uh, we're going to continue to promote, uh, health for our staff, uh, and just continue to educate them on financial wellness, uh, so they're prepared for retirement, uh, and then we will be making these best, uh, practices, enjoy the upcoming growth that the district has already experienced. And, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, the next, we will be subject to the new one purchasing department update.
Hi, I'm Derek. Hi, I'm back, um, here at Berkeley, I'm the director of purchasing, Charles Richet, um, just going to be very quick and, um, go through our different presentation. The main thing about T-Test marketing in the first season department is really built out, making sure that our budget stewards, our buyers, and those different processes, we work very hard in terms of trying to, uh, elaborate our categories and our commodity codes, and try that we're following policies that are as outlined by our policy, and the same kind of strategy that we're bringing to our employees here, and building knowledge in our staff. The one thing I wanted to link it up as well is the purchase department is the budget manager, rate manager, as I say, over our master monies that have come in. Two years ago, about today, we were being advised that we're getting close over to, uh, twenty-two million dollars, and with that, these are all responsibilities, it brought a lot of opportunities for us to really address some of the needs regarding our facilities, we incorporated some meetings with people out there. Facilities made this department, we were meeting monthly, almost every other week, just to ensure that we were having timely encumbrance of those funds, so I'll bring to you today to let you know that our S2 funds begin about the end of, uh, September of twenty twenty-three, we are currently at about ninety-three point eight percent of expenditure for that, we will be needing that hundred percent, uh, by setting for that as a goal. We do have some projects that are right now escaping, uh, just because of supply, um, regarding those feedbacks, but we are working very diligently with that. We've been going through some training related to how maybe pursue the opportunity to ask for, uh, extensions, um, they can do that for S1, we're hoping that would do that for S2, but our really thing is trying to close those money out. The other part is S3, that's our biggest chunk of money is about fifteen million dollars. We have hit our goal, we were supposed to be at sixty-six percent expenditure by the end of this year, we're at sixty-eight point five six. Uh, of those legs, that's twenty percent had to be allocated to learning laws, uh, what right about a little over fifty-six percent of that, uh, quickly really working hard to making sure that those things are, uh, being encumbered, as well as we could work in each regard of learning laws, uh, activities, to ensure about those, uh, types of, uh, things that were caused because of the COVID closure, and making sure that we're meeting our standards and expectation. Um, but without hesitation, we could be able to spend that, those money to begin September of twenty twenty-four. Um, again, they may give some extensions there, because they say this definitely does not look like that, um, but at the same time, they recognize there's been some, you know, kind of, uh, with COVID, there's still some impact there with trying to do some stuff, but without, there's been a very rewarding experience working facilities, learning a lot about that. High-performing and engaged workforce, uh, this year, we're really looking at whether we're trackers, we created an out, we're facing documented, we shared with all the budget stewards and the fires, uh, this particular chart in the middle, uh, is a spreadsheet, we are sitting at about six hundred and eighty purchase orders, uh, that we've monitored throughout the year, these each have at least minimum one asset that we're having to track with that into our full-let system, uh, all those secretaries have understood where those are at, there are actually, you know, basically conversations with our department with vendors, ensuring that we're having timely receipt of those items. Um, it's also making sure we know where those items are going, and ensuring that our full-let system monitors that, we're checking out those technology items, including those that are going to students that require that S2 money, as well as some other things that Dr. Naito was able to procure for our, um, district as a whole. Uh, the main thing here is we're just continuing to learn, and we're also making sure that our resource is going exactly where they need to go. Our inclusive and collaborative partnership, our department really feels that we are a partner with a lot of departments, all departments, all the campuses, uh, we know that the media are not able to meet their needs, and so we have to figure out how to procure that, uh, making that stop all conflicts down the line. Um, the main thing we focused here was really how do we, um, look at our green, how we say, our environmental imprint, um, I know there's some fancy words, they talk about that, but we really looked at, uh, getting some partnerships on how to dispose of our equipment that's no longer used to allow us to go into partnerships with, um, limits auctioneers, as well as we have a good partnership with Tiger Zantation, and we entered contracts this year with an electronic cycling company, together those three would be able to encumber at least about fifty thousand dollars back to the district, um, we feel that's our way to get back to the front balance and able to support. Us will lift up the pitch at the bottom, that is my department, uh, we are collaboration, uh, because of child nutrition and purchasing, we know how it's coming and going, and so there might be this partnership. Um, the other thing I want to lift up, we did get validated under S2 this year, and I think because of Mr. Charles Richet, and also collaboration with Great Movement Trust and facilities, we have all the documents needed to produce, produce to the state to say that we did our comprehensive needs set. Also with John Culver's guidance with CT, we're able to also figure out all those items, get those things submitted, we had all the checks and balances, we got a, basically a sample approval, and that was because we're all collaborative about the regions of how to use those funds, so, you know, so, plus also supporting our neighbors around some different activities. The last and not least is our resource operation excellence. We are carrying about ninety-two point so much percent in terms of, when we have requests coming to our warehouse, we're tracking how long does it take us to get there. Right now, we have campuses that are making a lot of supplies, so we're getting boxes requests daily, we're tracking how much that was, but we're also looking to be more efficient for us to rank the rates that we give at the big moves back, uh, uh, several years ago. But our thing is to try to be efficient, effective, and good stewards our rent, and I think that's one thing with purchasing department, and also spreading the wealth of knowledge on how to procure things in the most appropriate time and way, I think that makes our district even more vital and good budget stewards of our own. So within conclusion, the purchasing department, uh, sees itself and will continue to support educational leaders, uh, build up the knowledge, as well as collaborate with all our partners, uh, because we recognize that we're responsible for tracking the item that comes into our doors, even if it's back in nineteen fifty-three, as this picture shows, uh, that was already funded, so it still needs to be tracked, do that as something that can drive out the door. So, um, if anything, we're just, basically, uh, extra assurance that we're doing our good price, you know, we're established at all times, anything for you. Thank you very much.
All right, we move on to seven point five, P C P D racial profiling report, Mr. Stano. Chief.
You have a copy of the twenty twenty-two racial profiling report as a PDF in your electronic packet? Would you like to follow along with Chuck's previous question?
Thank you, Mr. Toscano. Mr. Massengill, board members, about two percent are annual racial profiling report that is mandated by state law for any law enforcement agency that conducts traffic stops. Would that mean conducts traffic stops are speeding in smooth zones, passing school buses, any other violation of a motor vehicle traffic act? So for the year twenty twenty-two, January first through December thirty-first, the Central Police Department had a total of twenty-four traffic stops, excuse me. Out of those twenty-four, three of them were black, eight of them were white, and thirteen were Hispanic Latino. Out of the twenty-four, eight were female and nine, excuse me, sixteen were male. Out of the twenty-four traffic stops, twenty-three were warning and one was a regular citation. Entertain any other, any questions? All right, it's short and simple. Oh, one more thing I do have to add. We did not receive any racial profiling complaints against any of our officers for that year.
All right, we'll move on to seven point six, upcoming events, Mr. Stano.
Trustees, real quick in your May calendar. You'll notice several events between now and the end of the school year. Most importantly, on May twenty-seventh, you'll see high school graduation, ten AM, the Albinome. You have a white folder under your T-shirt in the back there. It has graduation information, has your V I P partner pass. It also has the list of all the graduates. And Mr. McKay went through and highlighted all of the sections of students for which each of you will give the bonus. So bring that with you. Of course, we'll have a backup copy just in case. If you have any additional questions, let me know. Between BK and I, Mr. McKay will make sure you have all the information we regarding graduation. Note that that is a time change, ten o'clock. It's a little different. In last year, we did it at nine o'clock. So you know what the traffic situation is. Get there by about eight-thirty is probably wise. And there are some fresh ones, coffee in the back at that time. In June, the only thing I want to point out is you have S L I, the week of the fourteenth in June. Several of you have already notified Camry, which she's got it registered. There's any others that intend to go, let Camry know when she signed up. The second week of June, we start four-day work weeks for the summer, ten-hour days, and closing on Fridays as we are every year. In the summer, and then on the fifteenth is your next great, we're going to be back in the winter.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll move on to the action, agenda items, eight point one, budget limit, number twenty-two, twenty-three, oh five, local agents, Mr. Stano.
Yes, sir. This is bringing the board for the last time the budget limit so we can finish up all of the health day repairs groups. This summer, we'll be finishing the program by placing groups at Central Office, Harmony Hall, of course, and Salado. Of course, all of this is reimbursable. Insurance carrier, a hundred percent. But these entries are necessary for the approvals in this edition of the school records and different work that they will all be reimbursed by the insurance claim. If you have any answering questions.
Do you have any questions? All right, good.
I'm surprised that our good board approval budget amendment for the twenty-two, twenty-three, oh five, local agents, as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the budget amendment twenty-two, twenty-three, zero five, local agents, as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Victor Garza. Do I have a second? I have a second from Jim DeFriesman. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to item point two. Discussion and possible action of construction manager at wrist amendment number two, construction services for security upgrades festivals at Tradition Elementary School and Eastern High School and renovations at Legacy and Heritage, Mr. Stano.
Sir, trustees, under the C M A R construction delivery method, the construction manager, George General Contractors, is responsible for civilian requests and proposals for each set of on the projects along the way. George submitted proposals to the market for the security festival upgrades as well as renovations to Legacy Heritage Middle Schools as well as several existing projects across the district, in particular here at the high school on May ninth, twenty twenty-three. So George is to bring those proposals together with the district staff to determine the best value and then propose a guaranteed maximum price. So the G M P guaranteed maximum price of this work is included in your wrist lady's packet. And so what we're bringing to you tonight for consideration is what we call a G M P two, package two. This particular guaranteed maximum price, it includes all of the scoreboard included in the package. If you have any answering questions, or they have.
Any questions? All right.
Trustees, I recommend board approval, package two, procurement, security upgrading, test fields, and tradition elementary and high school renovations and legacy and heritage.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve, package two, procurement, security upgrades, festivals at Tradition Elementary and Eastern High School and renovations at Legacy and Heritage Middle Schools. Do you have a motion? I have a motion from Wendy Creases. Do I have a second? Second from Jamie Mumpie. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to action number item eight point three, construction administration services work safety holistic window fill, Mr. Stano.
Sir, trustees, the district is able to secure grant for the school safety grant that is going to enable us to meet the new standards for school safety. It relates to ballistic resistant glazing on windows that are facing the street or glass doors that are adjacent to windows that are facing the street that are not behind a non-scaleable fence. And so the amount of glazing across every campus in the district to meet these standards is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the grant is going to be unlisted. We worked with a company called N G S to ensure that we were meeting all of the safety standards with the material that we would be using and the windows that we would be glazing. Just to give some clarity about what that means, this isn't bulletproof glazing, it's bullet resistant. And it takes about three minutes to penetrate through the firearm. So definitely slows down the particular intruder in the worst case scenario. So it isn't bulletproof, it's bullet resistant glazing. Almost all of this glazing is clear. There is some glazing in tradition, particularly outside of cafeteria. And the offices facing the front that are not too wet. You can see out, but you can't see in. And those were requests by the team for additional safety in those particular areas because of the context. So if you have any answering questions, or has, I'm bringing this to you because it is a purchase over fifty thousand dollars. And that has been put obviously in the department. Every, every school will receive this glazing. Again, these are the windows and glass doors adjacent to windows that are road-facing that are not behind a non-scaleable fence. So that doesn't impact every single school in the mission. Trustees, I recommend board approval of N G S, the work related to ballistic window fill, as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve N G S for work related to ballistic window fill. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion from Victor Garza? Do I have a second? I have a second from Dave Mumpie. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to eight point four, construction administration services work related to road improvements on Greytown Road, Mr. Stano.
Sir, trustees, this is for road improvements on Greytown Road. This would be on Greytown that is in front of the property that we are building North Elementary on. We worked with our engineer, C S Murray, to take, to call for proposals for the scope of this work. We received four bids. And in your electronic packet, you'll see the tabulation of those. The criteria were evaluated for each proposal, worth of price, relevant experience, past performance, project management ability, subcontractor and supplier support capability, and financial strength. Again, the tab sheet that is attached indicates a scoring ranking of the posers. But we're pleased that the scoring matrix revealed that the top candidate, R L Jones L P, scored ninety-nine out of a hundred points using that criteria. And so they've been operating for over seventy years in the city of San Antonio. And there is our engineers, C S Murray, also worked with R L Jones L P on several projects in the past, favorable results. Therefore, staff is recommending that we consider. R L Jones, do you have to answer any questions? Any questions? Of course, I have a contact, particular contractor or scope of work.
I can't answer the question, but we're talking about the road, you know, adjacent to campus, long campus. Well, a big piece of roads in the county.
Yeah, the city.
Or should be.
Yeah, so as part of the traffic impact, we built schools, we have to address turn lanes and deceleration lanes as it relates to the traffic and school impact. And this is the road rage they work on. So John, we'll talk about the details related to those improvements or parts of those that are being proposed.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically exactly what Mr. Stano said. Whatever impact that we create there with our presence, the acceleration, deceleration lanes is on us. And it is a city-owned road.
The real problem is right now, the bridge is right there by the school. That's what the real problem is. That's, that's what really gets us. I want to put it on the wall in Tommy Allen and say, hey, that's on the show. At, at the, we are making this close to the city of San Antonio along that. The bridge, that's referring to you, to talking a little more about the issues. Urban damage, which, which we're not responding for the city of San Antonio. So we're trying to get some, some support there because it's narrow. You can't get two vehicles through there at the same time and it all goes to another area. In addition, the school coming in the next year and a half, it won't be sufficient to handle the traffic there. For safety, so. It'd be real nice in front of the school.
All right, any other questions? All right, good question.
Sir, trustees, I recommend board approval, proposal for road improvements on Greytown Road to R L Jones L P, as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the proposal for road improvements on Greytown Road to R L Jones L P. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Wendy Creases. Do I have a second? Emilio Carrasco, thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any trustee that would like to make a difference in the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I have a motion from Wendy Creases. Do I have a second? I have a second from Victor Garza. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion and a second, and we are all in favor. All opposed? We adjourn.